...that's, you know, outside of the gated area. If I, you know, I guess here's the thing. If the, if the city doesn't want a gated community, now's the time to say so. Because I never dreamt that it would be an issue. There's gated communities all over the world.
Does the, the roads are currently in place? Are they, is there a final road?
No.
What has been done to those yet?
Well, there's, there still has to be anywhere where it's, as time goes on, anything that would have an issue, you gotta, you gotta put it, you know, cut it, put it in. We got tiles that we gotta cut and put in. You know, we're trying to make a roadway so the utility companies can get back in here, put the utilities in, then we'll finish the running when it's all, when all the traffic, that type of traffic is over with and we're done tearing it up, that's when we finish. So it's not even close to being finished at this point. And like I said, there's, I don't know exactly, I can't tell you the footage, but I know it's less than half is even though. There's a lot more to do than what we've got done.
The one drainage pond that you, that's in place, after you taking over that land, is there any plans to put any additional drain ponds in to catch runoff water from the, from the creek so that it raises the water level?
They're, in the hydrology, that's what technically is that. It's created berms on the lower side, on the east end, that would hold the water from going into that unnamed creek. That little, that's basically a waterway for Leon Bobby's field. It's provided in the plants, a berm that would retain that water, okay? And, and hold it back. And then on, it's the northwest kind of corner, just off of Sand Creek and right back on to where that little creek runs parallel to the railroad for a few hundred feet, to berm that and hold it back there also. So essentially, yes, there's two more, basically ponds, you know? But the ideal is that they, they won't hold water permanently. And Gary actually made the mention this morning about if I put under drains in, it would, it would allow the ponds to drain out so people could keep them mowed, which is how the existing pond is. It has an under drain and it's, it, it never holds water. It drains out. I've, I've had the property, I've been in possession of the property for almost a little over three years now, I think. I've mowed the pond ever, ever since. When I went in and first took that property from the bank, weeds were growing out of foundations, weeds were ten feet high. People were raising hell with the city about doing something about it. I went in, cut it all down, finished the projects that got abandoned. And hopefully, I'm doing the right thing with this piece of property, with this development that we're doing. We're minimizing the impact. It, it's such a, so much smaller impact than what the previous design plans were. It's not, it's not even comparable. Part of that was to leave it in hills and valleys, not take a dozer in and level everything so I could put curb and gutter in and get a hundred and fifty homes instead of twenty-three homes.
I can definitely say that I'm not against you to go. The road is my main concern because driving on it every day and seeing how long it's gonna last and the durability of it's gonna be and how it's gonna hold up for people that do reside there. That's my concern.
So what would you like me to do?
Well, my suggestion would be to get the city required to put in, like, curb, you know?
I mean, flat curb, some drainage curbs, but flat curb.
Something of that nature. If that would help, I mean, Gary would know more about that than I would. An engineer, somebody can hold the asphalt in place, you know, without making a difference in my knowledge that I don't.
Well, it definitely would, I can tell you. I mean, Gary knows as well that, and there are some, I will, I've told you everything else. I've looked up, there are other communities that do put flat curbs in. It's, it's not a curb, but it's a border to the asphalt because of what you're talking about. It, it's a, it allows the edges not to get raveled. You know, so. Would I be against it? I don't want to, but if that would be a concession to, to our situation at bottom it, it would still allow the drain fields to be intact. It wouldn't be, it's not roll curb, it's, it's a flat border, you know, to, to concrete. And there are some that do, that do put that in. I've, I've looked up a lot of stuff and that is a, that's another method. And that's why it's there, that's why they do it.
If I may, I would also say, I was unaware of the idea of a flat curb, but that would actually alleviate some of the concerns I had with regarding liability for those city vehicles traveling along people's, you know, where the road comes right up to the, into the, the lot. That would alleviate concern that I had as well. And if I may, just for the record, Mr. Whitaker is a hundred percent correct. Everything that he has asked for in his modification, you are permitted as a planning commission to approve if you find that he met the stain, you know, the standard that he laid out, the multi-factor test. So that's my only other two cents.
You know, my answer would be, because it's, it's a, it's a heck of a project. It's packed. I, I went out, I, I threw in the streets, you know, that's why I said it. It's, it's gonna be a beautiful subdivision.
I think there'll be twenty-three people that, that will enjoy that space in the community.
And I believe it to be a positive subdivision for the city. I guess I'll interject something here. I think that everything we've talked about here, you're asking for variance, if we can come back to the street, that seems to be the one thing that everybody's street. And I can object to go back to the durability of the streets. Is, is the curb guttering the issue? Or is the fact that we don't know if the streets, what they probably put in, but ten years from now, fifteen years from now, they'd be, they'd hold up to the traffic that we get? Which, that can be proved with course handles.
Well, you can't, the, the curb, the roll back curb or a chair back curb, you can't do that without building pipes and putting pipes and ponds in. So then that does, that does away with all your absorption field is what we're trying to accomplish with the natural drainage in, in the way. As far as durability, I, I can't tell you that it's not because if you do a flat, you know, if you do a flat border, concrete border to, at the border of the asphalt, the edge of the asphalt, yes, it's gonna be more durable. Because you're not raveling the edge of the asphalt bottom line. That's, I can't, I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you any different because I know better. And anybody that knows what tale they're talking about knows better, so. And I'm sure, you know, that's addressed, it's probably what Bruce' biggest concern was about, I guess, maybe.
The question is, we all know as, as more than it seems to be coming to the agreement, this is gonna be a tremendous benefit to the community and this is going to take us further down the road. End of the day, I, I do food distribution, so I'm by no means an expert in roads and I actually have no care to know about roads or drains. That's why Gary Murray and Chris is our attorney with the liability piece behind this. Are we, as a city, we're gonna benefit, yes, with this, but are we gonna be paying for it in the long run? That's the, that's the question right now, right? Gary's saying that if these are done in this manner, there's a potential that we're gonna have cost long term. With the border, with the sustainability of the roads, could that be something that alleviates problems from the city?
Yes, that would, that would alleviate some of the problems. One of the things you don't know, soils are not consistent. The good thing is, he went out and he cut in the road, natural compaction, some of the best you can get. Still doesn't mean there's not a soft spot underneath that wasn't cut out. We don't know that, because we weren't out there. If we were out there, we'd make them take a loaded truck of stone and go over the road and the soil started moving and pumping, we'd make them cut it up because we don't wanna hold up. But we weren't afforded that opportunity for what he's done so far. He's willing to afford us the opportunity to do that going forward. So, you know, we, we have a little bit of issue of what was down. I'm sure the thickness isn't everything that he says he put down, he's put down. I just don't know what the condition of what he put it down on was. And, you know, we can, we can do that going forward. And if he did the flat curb, that, you know, up against the edge of what he's got, you know, that's gonna hold that edge in place. You're not gonna have soft soils at the edge where it's gonna turn down. It's not gonna push out. You know, it would be an alternative to a roll curb to keep the drainage the way he wants to do it. Now, as far as the drainage goes, I've reviewed that pretty extensively. He's required from our ordinance to not run off any more once he develops than what it does in five years from today. He is not required to tame any water that comes onto him from upstream. He's just allowed to pass that through. What they have done and submitted, they meet that requirement of the ordinance.
So the one thing that the question is, is a fear that this is not gonna work and that we're gonna be spending money down the road. And if we let fear determine every decision, we're probably always gonna say no because it's, it is a bit scary, right? At the same time, the improvement in what is gonna happen with the community, does that outweigh what the fear is? And if we put the border in, hearing from Gary, that that would suffice and help with the road structure?
And, and what, it's also a visual when you're plowing, that you've got a place to stop. You're not gonna go across that, you're not gonna put a blade in somebody's yard like you would if you were just trying to plow the edge of asphalt and all you saw was black and next thing you know, you're peeling up somebody's yard. You've got that visual screen there, so.
So hearing this, and he's already decided, he's already told us that he would be not against it, but he would be, he's not gonna jump up and be happy that he has to do it, but this is something that he would be willing to do. I see no problem with approving this plat with those modifications and the modifications that Mr. Whitaker has provided. And I'm excited for what the future holds with that development. That's my opinion.
Can I ask one other question to Gary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know I'm talking to one lab, just on the other, you can just read it. Is there a way to, if you did core sampling, or is there a way to find out if the road that's currently in place, it would have met the standard? I mean, that you guys would have approved it if it had, if you had been offered that chance? I mean, can we go back and look at it now and say, yeah, that would have been an okay road?
The core sample will say whether you've got the thickness of the stone and you've got the thickness of the asphalt, it's compacted, correct? That certainly can be done. But again, any geotechnical engineer can tell you, that's good for that four inch spot that you have.
And the rest of the road.
So, again, soils are not consistent. And you have soft soils and, and other things where we're doing Veterans Way at the roundabout. They had to undercut that about five feet because there was a pocket of soft soils before they were able to get compaction on what your road actually sits on. So it wasn't squishing.
Isn't also, Gary, the intent of the fact that you, you don't accept the road until a year after the dedication, or from, from completion before the deed of dedication, isn't that though exactly the reason why they do that? So that if there are any soft spots that develop, it's, it's on the developer to repair that instead of the city? Because you can't test every inch, even when you're out there looking at it, you're not, nobody. I've put in a lot of subdivisions and not one time has there been a city engineer or a city plan director onsite the whole time, never. They come out and they've checked the, with a loaded triaxle and see what it looks like. That was, that's what was done. And then we went from there. And if there was any thing that had to be fixed, we fixed it before the deed of dedication. Milestone paved this, milestone graded, milestone, they're part of the grading. Milestone did the compaction on the stomach. You know, they put roads in every day. It's not like I don't have a favor myself. If I did, I'd probably done it, but I don't, so. I think that it's, it would be foolish to think that I'm not gonna have a spot that I gotta fit. So, you know, and I know that already, I've, I've done it before. No matter how hard you try to get everything right, sometimes it's just what he said. There's, soils are different in different areas, you know, so.
One thing that could be done?
I have not talked to Jeff about it, but I've seen it done in other projects that I've been involved with. He may be willing to hold his, his performance bond for two years instead of.
A year.
He's giving you two years of a warranty, maybe. And you can ask him if he wants to do it. But two years of a warranty that gives you more comfort, I'm saying, okay? There's definitely gonna be more concrete trucks. There's gonna be more, low boys go in there for people digging basements and everything else. If, if something's gonna happen before he puts the surface down, he'll probably wanna wait till you've got twenty, fifteen to twenty-nine before you put the surface down. And that's gonna be the time that you've got the drainage payment section down. That's when you're gonna see any kind of gap. If he's willing to maybe hold a bond, performance bond for two years and then turn it over, then he gives you that extra comfort and not that fear that you might have.
Jeff, is that something you would entertain?
I wouldn't have any issue with that. Yeah, that's, that's, whether it was one year, twenty-four months, I don't have any problem with that.
More members, any other comments, questions to Jeff?
I'm still chomping at the bit here. You know, Jeff has said, you know, what has happened in the past and, and he's right. Several years ago, we were probably lacking in some areas. But once we got a city engineer hired, you know, we improved our situation here in Greensburg on development. So we have made improvements. That's why a lot of the reason we're standing here tonight hashing everything out. Maybe a few years ago, we wouldn't have been standing here hashing things out. It'd been said, done, and gone with. But my concern is, counselor, if Mr. Whitaker still wants this to be a gated community and not open to the public, even though the people out there will be paying plenty of tax, there is tax revenue that maintains the road. We, the city doesn't get for MVH to maintain the roads, snow removal and everything. We don't get all that money. We get a very small portion of it to maintain the roads. So we have to include everybody's tax money in Greensburg. So when we include everybody's tax money for the, the maintenance and snow removal and everything else, the, the streets and roads in the city of Greensburg, can we deny any citizen, any taxpayer of the use of those streets? You know, that's a question. And the next thing is, with that, without it being private, a gated community, are we held in liability for such things as the three hundred degree radiuses at thirty mile an hour for a right or left hand turn? You know, what liability do we have? We want to make this work. And like you used to said, Commissioner President Kevin, we'd like to have this in our community. It would be quite an asset to our community. We want to work with the developer, but what can we do without putting ourselves liable for different things, not following our own ordinances? And like the counselor said, we can, you can waive those requirements. How much liability do you wanna put on the backs of the city? And like I said before, let's try to make this work, but not put the residents of Greensburg in any kind jeopardy. If it's gonna be a private gated community, so be it. You know, if you wanna give those waivers, it's the Housing Association's liability then. But just something to think about. But that is a concern of mine. If we're gonna spend tax dollars, can we limit, restrict public use of those streets? To just drive out around there just to gaze and see what's being built? They're gonna be nice homes, it's gonna be something to see, nice topography, country setting. You know, I'd love to have a home out there. But do what you can, guys.
I, I will admit, I, I do not know the answer to that question as to whether or not you can. I don't believe there's anything in our local ordinance that says that. I think you're right, I don't think there is a local ordinance that addresses a gated community. So that means you would be referring to state statutory schemes. And generally speaking, state statutory schemes in this area are gonna say, refer to your local ordinance. So I, I, I don't, so I cannot answer that question there. As I sit here now, I cannot tell you for sure if you will be permitted to deny access to a citizen or taxpayer to a gated community if it's on a public road. I, my gut tells me that the answer is probably yes. If you, if you approve of the plat and it's a gated community and you know that that's what the subdivision is, my guess is you can't. But I don't wanna give you that opinion without, I wouldn't wanna give you that opinion without answering, without actually doing the research. And I will say I have not answered that question, or I've not looked that question. As to whether or not we are increasing our exposure to liability, certainly. I, I mean, yes, you are. Anytime, anytime the city does anything that has, that involves design or, you know, implementation of a design, you're exposing yourself to liability. Anytime you deviate from what was your normal standard design function, you know, standards, you're, you are increasing your exposure to liability. Does that mean you shouldn't do it? That, that's entirely up to you guys. I mean, I've, I've said it before this commission, I'll say it again. I mean, I can sue a ham sandwich if you want me to. So can I tell you that there's a way to create a subdivision that can't possibly be sued? No. And, and frankly, if you were to have an auto accident in there, you know, within the subdivision, even if it was gated, I mean, you're still probably still gonna get sued. Even if it was a private road, you're still probably gonna get sued because you didn't put up the right signage or you didn't have the right type of gate or whatever. And the homeowners association is gonna get sued. Everybody's gonna get sued because that's what my profession does, sue people. But, so to answer to the mayor's question, yes, you will increase your liability. Your liability exposure, how much? I don't know. Whether or not you can create a way around it, I don't know. I will say that the, the things that I have, that we've been addressing with Mr. Whitaker tonight, the things he has agreed to do, the increase, you know, of his, of his performance bond, the, the addition of the flat curb, those types of things, I think, are going to help. But certainly, if you deviate from your design standards, you are increasing your liability exposure.
Well, it's getting late and everybody wants to go, I'm certain of that. So the only thing I'm gonna say to that comment, or comments by the mayor, is you changed your liability when you allowed three hundred foot radiuses and thirty mile an hour curbs. You brought traffic up to a higher speed than what was ever allowed in residential subdivisions prior to that. It was twenty mile an hour. My suggestion is a twenty mile an hour speed limit on this road, this entire subdivision. I would rather see people slow down, not speed up with highway performance curve, curves, radiuses. I think they should go slower. There's that.
Procedurally, you, you have what is in front of you, your normal option. You can, you can approve the plat as requested, you, or the, yeah, the primary plat. You can approve the primary plat as, as requested. You can require changes, so you can ask that the, that the developer implement the changes that you want to see made and then, you know, then you're approving the plat subject to those additional agreements from the developer. Or you can deny the plat and say, you know, essentially you're saying, go back to the drawing board. Or you can take those, the options that are available to you from parliamentary procedure.
I'm gonna make the motion that we approve this, based on, we do core samples to the road that has already been constructed, that Jeff put a flat curb on that area, that the city then takes over and inspects the roadway that is constructed from here on, and that he increases two year, his performance bond from one year to two years. Then my motion would be to approve it with his modifications as requested.
Yes, sir.
And that the two foot flat curb?
Yes.
Who got the width degree to that?
And the core sampling is at the developer's request?
Yes, the core sampling would be at their expense, yes.
I do have one I think, I'm not sure you guys know this as far as on the plat. There are two culs that are tied to what is existing on Jack's way. So that won't be flat. That is, just like the rest of it. That's the one I'm sure you guys know.
Right, and that, those two.
With the exception of the two culs.
Right, with the, this would be with the exception of the two culs.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Blake?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Five zero.
I'm confused, this is gonna be private? Or the, the city's gonna maintain streets and roads in the future? Is it gonna be a gated community? Heck, I don't know who's responsible for making this on the gates, there are gonna be gates.
The gates, the fencing that we were putting in around the roadways and any landscaping was, that is all to be maintained and done by the homeowners association. That was never intended to be part of what the city's responsibility would be. That's, that wasn't part of it.
And my motion was made on the assumption that the city would be responsible for the streets if those things that I've brought up in the motion were met. The core samples were okay, that he put the two foot flat curb in, the two year performance bond was, was done. And we would maintain the streets. I have no objection, if it's legal, if you could research that for us, to it being a gated community. Now, if we have to allow, because city money's being used to maintain the streets, if we have to allow access, we have to allow it. There's nothing we can do about it. But my idea would be to go ahead and let it be gated for right now unless you tell me otherwise.
Okay, that's fine, concerned you've come with that answer. Well, that was my understanding of what you had motioned. Was that your, your understanding, what your second was? And if I could, just for, as a point of information, for the record to reflect, all of the I votes, was that your understanding of the motion as well?
Yes.
Then I'll get you an answer on that gated community. That's interesting.
Okay, so we're all in agreement now, we had one. It's too late.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Gary, it's Mr. Holden, do you?
I don't believe so. I'm trying to call him, but I don't believe they're buying.
Okay, so that was the, by through your court status, let's say, billings?
He was, he was notified with a certified letter that he was requested to come here and give you guys a timetable. He either didn't, I haven't seen the green card come back. He's either refused it.
Gary, on the, on the minutes you got here that he requested to appear for accessory building, okay, is that, was he gonna want a new building?
No, he's got the unsafe buildings garage, he's at, uh, northeast corner first east.
Right, but I thought, I thought maybe he wanted to, a lodge or an accessory building?
No, he's got an accessory building with a roof that's falling in.
Okay.
And it was on the unsafe building last, and again, here we go, what do we do? Do we want, do we wanna start pining? Do we want, we had, decided last week, give him another chance, notify him again to come up here before the board?
He's chose to ignore that.
He's chosen to ignore again, so I, I guess.
Gary, when you went out or did you go out and check out the building?
Yes.
Uh, is the building worth saving or is it salvageable or is it just?
It's salvageable, it's, it's just the decking for the roof. The rafters and tresses look fine.
So it, it could be repaired?
It could be repaired easily.
But it's only gonna continue to deteriorate in the spring with the whole of it and the rain running into, that is, the deckings, the rafters and joists are not gonna be, so anybody's had a water leak, that is that. Uh, my idea is we pursue notifying him that he's being fined.
Uh, I can send him a notification.
And that's my idea, I don't know what the rest of you think.
Yeah, I can certainly send him a notification that indicates that we're, you're implementing the file, that he can be recording this property and the other things that we can do with unsafe building, including entering onto his property and have it removed at his cost. Uh, and see if that lights a fire under.
I'm gonna supply a few.
That might have to be served because mail's not working.
Right, well, we have, we have had to do that in the past with other residents and what I, the way I did that is had someone from my office actually physically go serve, serve the papers. Uh, we can ask one of the, the police officers to physically serve that letter.
I, I will pass billing and he's right on the street, the billing is, so if he tears it down, there's no way he can build anything back there, correct?
Not gonna, not meet the setback. So if you'd like me to do that, I'm happy to do it.
That'd be my suggestion, though. Is that the consensus of the board?
I agree.
Bruce?
Yes.
Yes. Can I ask, I guess, for our, for our votes?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we allow Chris to do that.
Sorry, second.
Blake?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Happy to do it. All right. Item four, other items of interest from planning commission members. Roy?
Nope.
Blake, have you heard none?
I have something of interest from the planning commission.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes I bring, bring good news. I'd like to introduce our new city engineer, Mr. Ron May of Acon Engineering. We're putting him out of business and putting him to work. Ron, would you like to tell everybody who you are, please?
Well, as, as the mayor said, my name's Ron May. I've, um, been in the engineering business now for forty-four years, I think, something like that, too long. Um, done some amount of this kind of work, spent a lot of time working in transportation design work, worked for a lot of counties, including Decatur County, done some work for the city in the past and I've always greatly enjoyed the time I spent in Greensburg and Decatur County and I'm happy to have this opportunity. Um, looking forward to having a chance to work with all of you as time goes forward and, uh, see if I can help and maybe agitate everyone as, as much.
John, first mission, what's the decision, what's the city's?
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Now you can ask for a motion.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.